All right, Commissioner Mudge will join us in just a moment, but we'll go ahead and get started so that we can be respectful of everyone's time. It's May 11th, 2021 today. And it is 1:00 PM and we are here for a work session. It'll be split into two parts. The first part from 1 to 2 will be a work session with the Housing Coalition, followed by a work session with the City of Ludville for fire department equipment purchases and capital planning. So I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Kristi Galarza from Lake County Building Generation and with the Housing Coalition, so that she can get us started on a topic that we're talking about today, which is funding mechanisms. Great, thank you Kayla, and Paul Anderson is going to get us going.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. The group presenting today is the Funding Mechanism Subcommittee, Subcommittee of the Lake County Housing Coalition, which the whole Coalition was formed as a recommendation out of the 2019 Housing Action Plan. And I believe the intent was to share that plan in the chat. We'll get the actual 2019 Housing Action Plan shared, so everyone can take a look at that if you haven't already. As well, just ask that you hold your questions until the end of the presentation and we will have plenty of time for questions then. We can go on to slide 2. This really is a summary of the Lake County housing situation, identified in the Summit County Housing Needs Assessment. And that assessment will also get shared, which really shows the need of roughly 900 units, being our current shortage here in Lake County. We're way behind, and in order to make an impact, we would recommend a minimum of $500,000 annual allocation. And really with this group, we've identified a need of around 1.7 million annually to fully address each area of concern. We'll get those action plans shared, as well as the needs assessment. Pass it off to Dan for slide 3.
Thanks, Paul. This is Dan Northcraft. Maybe you guys went over that. I was fiddling with the passcode. A home builder here, and I don't have permanent internet yet at the office, so Kristi, I can't see any of the slides, so I'll just count on you to flip them. So a quick intro, the Housing Coalition believes the three funding mechanisms that the plan that I think Paul talked about recommends, that are immediately viable, community-based funding sources to help solve the community issue of affordable housing, and we think they should be seriously considered. So we'll go over these in the next three slides. I'll cover the first two, Alex will get the third. But the three options are allocating all sales tax generated from sale of all building materials to community housing, activating an additional 1.5 mils on county property taxes for community housing, and then creating an excise tax on short-term rentals for community housing. So Kristi, I think it's a slide break here. As you probably know, starting in May of 2019, retailers in Colorado were required to remit sales tax to the appropriate jurisdiction, even if they did not have a physical presence in the county or state, commonly referred to as the Wayfair tax. So this created a significant new and ongoing windfall to local governments that has just gone into the general fund in the past with no specific allocation. So the Housing Coalition is advocating that this windfall on the tax of construction materials be allocated specifically to community housing. It's new revenue that's directly proportional to construction activity and does not affect the cost of construction. A breakdown that Augustina did for the Housing Coalition says that it's probably about $325,000 a year out of about 1.7 million total. The action plan that the consultants put together also flowed the idea of the tax on building materials. We got some new information just this week that makes this not a discussion we think is worth having at this time, but I think merits a discussion, or we think merits a discussion in the future. So Kristi, if you could do the next slide. So the next one would be mill levy activation. County currently has 3.087 unused mills, and the Housing Coalition's advocating for an activation of 1.5 mils for community housing. So still leave over half the mills inactive and provide roughly $335,000 with an additional minimal cost to the average homeowner. If you wanted to start smaller, 1 mil would be about $225,000 a year and be roughly, we debated this yesterday, but I think roughly about $25 a year to property owners, and that first one would be about 40. And in both of these, the activation would have less of an impact on lower-cost homes than higher-cost homes. So and during my 10 years of Habitat for Humanity, you know, we really emphasized that we want the community to come together and solve housing issues. So that was the community at large, and then Habitat homeowners working together to solve this. We feel like the activation of the mill levy would give the community some buy-in on a community-wide issue of community housing. So and the Housing Coalition would be happy to work with the county to provide education or reach support. I know raising taxes is not a popular thing, but you know, be happy to throw some weight behind that and try and help people understand why this is an important use of their tax revenue. So that's the end for me till questions, I guess. So I'll hand it off to Alex.
Yeah, so the next mechanism could be a short-term rental excise tax. So here we've calculated it to be approximately $127,500. That's based off of 100 nights, an average rate of $100 per night for short-term rentals. So that'd be 83 in the county at 5%, would be about 41,500. 172 in the city at 5% would be about 86,000. So it would require a ballot measure to be on the November ballot. And the next steps to explore this further would be to have the legal department look into whether the unincorporated county could be included, create a B O C C resolution to include it on the ballot. We could provide technical assistance on that. And then finally, just community education and outreach to explain the importance of this, which we could also partner and help out with. So the funding uses will go off to Reed.
So at this point, I'd like to refer you to a link in the chat, which will take you to a Google page showing you a spreadsheet of all the different potential funding uses of funds. And just to put this in context, given the scale of the housing issue facing Lake County right now, and the fact that the county is far, is way behind on addressing the issue and needs to catch up, that the full force of funding available should be thrown at the problem to try and address it and to do it over the long haul. So looking at this breakdown of different ways that the funds could be used, they're in three categories, basically administration, property acquisition, and then other opportunities. And so that first one in the administrative side of things, if we have a deed restriction program in place with a number of units with deed restrictions, and that needs to be managed. And so you're going to need the capacity, administrative capacity, to have a full-time person salaried with benefits, plus the other expenses of running a program to monitor all those deed restrictions and to have intake for people entering into the program, applying for those homes, all that stuff that needs to happen to run the program, that would be the first, or one of the early costs to helping to address the issue, and about $100,000 a year. The second bucket would be looking at property and deed restriction acquisition costs. And so if you have existing homeowners who are willing to put their home into a deed restriction, then to incentivize them to do that, some sort of compensation is appropriate. And so we're suggesting that maybe four houses a year at $25,000 each over time would slowly create a larger part of the community housing inventory that would be permanently deed restricted and held at an affordable price in perpetuity. So that $100,000 a year could slowly build up that part. If you're going to have homes that are with deed restrictions, then you also have to have protections in place for the community's interests and investment in those properties. So if a homeowner is delinquent on their payments and heading towards foreclosure, we do have to have the need to be able to intervene and do so quickly. If a home that has a deed restriction goes to foreclosure, the deed restriction goes away, and the community investment in that particular home can be lost. And so having a fund or a line of credit to be able to exercise a first right of refusal on that home, to buy it out of foreclosure and then turn around and sell it to another qualified buyer is a really essential tool to have in your toolbox. And again, this could be a full sum of money sitting in deposit, or you could have a line of credit. And then once that home is resold, that, those funds are replenished for that purpose, and they can just be used over and over again as needed. And then with any project developments, some pro formas pencil out nicely, some have gaps in their funding. And if traditional sources cannot quite close the gap to make that unit affordable for community housing, then sometimes a little bit of money might need to be interjected to help cover that gap. Or sometimes it's a matter of leveraging other sources by showing a local match. So setting aside $100,000 in a bucket of funds for each development, and then being able to use those funds as needed would really help accelerate the pace of development and make sure that with each development, there is some sort of housing provided. And then the other opportunities are quite big ones. So looking at land banking, this is a really important mechanism over the long haul. If you've got a property or a parcel that is up for sale and going out on the market, to be able to compete on the market, you need to be able to act quickly with significant capital to seize that opportunity to buy up that land, and then to sit back for a second and decide what's the best use of that land, come up with a process, a development plan, and be able to manage those holding costs over time until the property can be developed and then those units sold out, and those funds are recuperated at that point and put back into this revolving loan fund for land banking. Having this fund allows a jurisdiction to be able to take action and do it promptly and act in a hot market. Not having these funds just means that opportunities will pass us by again and again, because it's the lethargy of institutional funding is so slow, the market won't tolerate it. That same concept can be applied to things like hotels or motels that are up for sale, or other buildings or other opportunities that could be leveraged for housing. Again, having funds set aside to take action when the opportunity arises and then recuperate those funds over time is a really critical tool to complement all these other things that are being done. And then one of the last areas of concern is that low-income households or people who need a housing that is affordable, need community housing, oftentimes can afford a mortgage, but they don't have the funds for a down payment. And so Down Payment Assistance Program is pretty critical in being able to get people into that housing. And then those funds can stay with that home over time, just like the investment in the buying, the purchasing the deed restriction and benefit family after family. So the sum total of all these opportunities or these ways to apply these funds far exceeds what can be accumulated in a given year. The idea is instead of aside funds and get them to where they need to be and accumulate funds over time, so that in five or 10 years, the whole housing mechanism is a well-oiled machine able to react to the current situation. And this whole discussion merits a lot more deep diving, but this gives you a broad overview of the potential uses of these funds. And with that, I'll hand it off back to Paul.
Great, thank you. This final slide really takes the spreadsheet that identified many of the potential needs, which shows a 1.7 million annual need and breaks that down. The green is really the remaining need with blue, red, and yellow being the three main funding sources that we are proposing or recommending that the county proceed with. The difference between the two is really if 1 mil or 1.5 mil would be activated, really the 1.5 mil gets us much closer to halfway there, or really the $500,000 minimum. But really, knowing that the need is much, much greater than that, aggressively going after funding and getting this funding mechanisms underway so that we can react as needs arise and opportunities present themselves. With that, I will hand it over to Kristi for questions.
Thanks, everybody. I am so glad that you guys are all here to talk about this problem. I've been telling you it's coming for a long time, and here we are ready to discuss it. So you know, I think what we would hope would come out of today is just some in general responses from the three commissioners on how you think these three mechanisms are a good fit for Lake County at this time or not. Definitely not asking you to make a decision today. This is the first step, right? We've given you like the 40,000 view. We're happy to come back and continue to work through the details, but I would love to answer some questions from each of the commissioners and then anybody else who's in attendance. So which commissioner would like to go first? I can call.
Okay, you're going to put us on the spot, huh? I guess, let's see, a lot of questions, and some of them probably really are questions, I mean, like for us to deal with, not, you know. I guess my understanding as a still relatively new commissioner, I mean, that, so let's see, let's start with the Wayfair tax. So I mean, that is money that's currently coming in and we have absorbed into our budget. So I mean, that, I totally get your point, that that is a new, newish windfall opportunity. But you know, that, that, you know, to some extent, that's a zero-sum game, to my understanding, in terms of other things we need to be doing as a county. So again, not, that's not a good idea to earmark that for this purpose. But that, you know, that's money that's already coming in. I guess another thing is, I mean, so I really appreciate the detailed budget and explanation of what that 1.7 million goes towards. I mean, what, and we, I'm all for taking a first step first, but what are some idea, I mean, where are we going to raise the remaining 50 or 60% of this goal?
So our recommendation is, is that that's a goal that you get to, to be fully functioning, right? So my, our suggestion, sorry, is that, that we aggressively dedicate some money towards it for the first three or four years, because we know we are behind and we probably should have been establishing funding mechanisms years ago.
Yeah.
And in order to be effective in this market, similar to some of the things that Reed says, it's going to hurt, right? Like we, no one's saying that there's this magic bullet that's going to be easy, like no, this is a hard decision. But if we want our community to be successful and thrive both economically and health-wise, we can't wait any longer. It needs, it needs to happen. And I'm not saying it's going to be easy, but we're happy to help you navigate it and do research for you and bring that technical assistance and capacity where we can.
Yeah, and I'll say, I mean, I appreciate that honest answer that is not, oh, just easy. You know, and also, like I said, I mean, appreciate, I totally agree with your point that we are already behind some number of months or years. But at least we have this work, you know, and you know, maybe 1.7 isn't exactly right, but it's a great, you know, point, you know, starting point to have those specific tasks with at least an initial estimate of what the budget needs to be.
Yeah, one second, Jeff. And just, just to give you insight on where we got these numbers, we talked to Summit County officials, both in the planning department and in the housing authority, Gunnison Valley similarly, and Chaffee County. We picked through their budgets for the housing authorities to, and we talked, like, okay, what programming do you need right off the bat to make this happen? And so again, like you said, it, it's a starting point. It's not perfect. But happy to help you guys refine that. And just so you know, I don't think I mentioned this before, we're going to be making the same presentation to the city. I know the mill levy is the decision for you guys to make, but I think it'd probably be helpful to have city council support if that is something you guys would like to pursue. Sorry to interrupt you, Jeff. Did you have another?
No, no, that was good. Let me, I'll see if anyone else has questions for now while I look through notes and figure out what else. I don't know.
That's fine. We can come back to you. Sarah, Kayla?
Thanks to y'all. Yeah, I really like this outline as well, and I think that my, for some reason, I had thought that this was a joint meeting with the city, but I would be very interested to jump on that, because I wonder, I think the hard thing too is developing that capacity in the appropriate organizations with the authority and the ability to implement these things. So I think, you know, I presume that Reed and the Housing Trust would have some responsibility there. And then as the housing authority is developing, you know, how, how and maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I see a closer relationship with the housing authority and the city, because it is correct, it is the city, it is the city boundary, the housing authority has authority over, correct? So I'm curious to see how that, go ahead, Kristi.
Yeah, you raised a lot of great points. Thank you, Sarah. So look forward to, in the fall, we will be facilitating a discussion between the city, the county, and the housing authority to decide where that administration is going to lie. That hasn't been decided yet, right? That's your guys' decision. And you are correct that the housing authority only has authority within the city limits at this time. There are some workarounds with a memorandum of understanding that could allow some service in the county. And again, that will be addressed within the, I think that's going to take up a whole meeting, right? Because it's a big, it's a big topic. And so I just have left it a little vague in, we think this is how much it would, would cost to administer, and we don't know who's going to administer it yet.
Yep.
Did I hit all of your questions?
I think so, yeah. And I, I mean, I'm, I'd definitely be interested in that short-term rental excise taxation. I think that's been a longstanding question of how to, you know, take, well, leverage kind of, and I know they're not all second homeowners, but that second homeowner inventory. But I think, I mean, I think everything you touched on is well summarized, and I think at one two very small levels, like I would be surprised if, you know, there wasn't some motivation from the city or in county to do those things, because I think that there's been, you know, some dabbling in some of those things, like the land banking too. And I'm really curious to know, like, when the URA was formed too, on some of those loan opportunities, Dura has, I looked at the Denver URA that provided some, not necessarily the same loan opportunities, but it was more for maintenance that I had seen and keeping up living conditions in homes for folks. But again, I think the city and the URA and figuring out how to weave all of those and leverage them together is we just need to get to.
Yeah, the reason we decided it was good to talk to you guys first before going to the city, as we often hear from the city, we would like to follow the lead of the county. So we're hoping, we're going to, the presentation is exactly the same, right? And our hope is, when we talk to the county, they were in favor of these things potentially and would like to explore them more. How does that sit with you? So the hope is, we can get that information from you today in order to present to them on May 26th, 25th, May 25th at 6:00 PM, which I will send you guys all an invitation to. Any other questions, Sarah?
No, um. No.
That's fine. I know it's a lot of information right off, right off the bat, but like I said, I'm hoping that this is the first of many conversations that we're having as we navigate this. Kayla, any questions for the group?
Thanks, Kristi. Do you have, or could you send me any data on where you came up with the, the numbers that you presented to us for the funding mechanisms? Like it would be, it would just be helpful for me to be able to see the math of where that stuff came from, if you have that.
Sure. Are you talking about how we came up with the potential projections of what it would generate?
Um.
For the other of the recommended uses?
Hold on, let me pull up the one that I have open here. It's the Funding Mechanisms and Potential Amounts PDF that you had sent us.
Yeah, so I can summarize that for you pretty quickly. So we got the mill levy from Crystal Hewlett. I just emailed her and said, if they activated one, if they activated one and a half, how much would that generate? So she gave me those numbers. For the building materials use tax, Augustina has worked with Marla to go through the sales tax data and organize it. I'm sure you guys have seen that document. It's like 140-page Excel sheet. So they did January, February, March, and then we averaged out, we got the Nates Codes for building materials, and we averaged out for those three months. It came to something like 26,000 monthly, I believe, and then we just multiplied it by 12 to get an annual amount. If you guys would like to drill down into that further, we're happy to work with Marla and Crystal to get a 2020 annual view of that, if you think that that would be more helpful. For the short-term rental taxation, we found out how many licenses there are in the county, and we found out how many licenses there could be in the city if the cap And we found out how many licenses there could be in the city if the cap was reached. Then we considered if each short-term rental was getting $100 per night and they were booking 100 nights throughout the year, and we calculated 5% tax, it's how we got those numbers. We believe that that's a conservative estimate. The important thing to know about the short-term rental is that I have been asking everybody. I was on hold with the state sales tax department for an hour and a half the other day about, there's this question about if short, if an excise tax can be imposed in an unincorporated county. Some people think maybe yes, some people think maybe no. There have been some other counties that did other excise tax, but not specifically short-term rental. The only example of this is in Mount Crested Butte, which is a city, not a county. And so we would definitely need you to authorize Chris Floyd to help us navigate that. If that's something you wanted to look down the road, I highly recommend that we not pursue this as, as a ballot measure if it's not something we can do both in the county and the city, because I feel like it could pit the county and the city against each other. And we don't want that. We want whatever's happening in the county to be happening in the city. So, so that we both have thriving economies. And then I did talk to Patty Berger about the process for getting, getting on the ballot. And what that would look like is you guys would need to pass a resolution on that in your July, sometime in July, so that we could get that language on the ballot in August. And as we mentioned before, totally happy to help with technical assistance and getting that language draft and creating a committee for the campaign and all that jazz.
Cool. Thanks. You actually took one of my questions about an excise tax and if that was something that was applicable to counties that are not home rule counties like the city and county of Denver or Brighton or Welds County. If that was something that we could do or not, since we're not considered a home rule county and we follow those statutory requirements. So Kristy, then the next step from this, like what's our next step after this work session today? Like I, I really think that in order for for me to support or stand behind a ballot measure, measure initiative or a mail levy allocation, we need to decide what it's going to be used for. So when, when will we get that recommendation from the housing coalition? Or is that a recommendation that we need to determine as the board?
Yeah. So the document that we shared earlier, the recommended uses, is the high level of what, of how we would recommend you use those funds. Happy to continue working with you on refining that. This is, this is our, our best guess at it, having never had done this before. But yeah, I agree that, that we should, after this meeting, you know, I'd like to leave this meeting with, with a pretty good feel for the three of you, not like unanimously, but each three of you, on how you're feeling about all three of them. So that I can bring that information to the city to get that information from them. And then maybe we could do a work session with both groups to really start drilling down into the details. Definitely welcome feedback on that process if you think it should go some other way, but that's just my initial logistical mind way of doing things.
I don't, go ahead, Jeff, go ahead.
Sorry, I just had a couple of follow-up questions on, I mean, I guess first on the short-term rental excise tax. First is, do we, so we have, and, and again, sorry, this is like maybe coming new to some of this. So we, we have a licensing process, but are there some implementation costs of tracking that that would eat into what we actually get from trying to implement that? You know, I was just looking, looking at the, and again, this is like super helpful information. I mean, that's not trivial, but that's not a huge amount of money, you know, towards the, the total amount. I, I just want to make sure that we don't try to do something that like costs us more money to get in place or to implement than we're actually generating in revenue.
That is a very, very good thought. And I would have to work with Mount Crested Butte to find out what they're, but we have, they're really good partners with us, right? Both Michael Yurman used to run that department and Willa Williford is, is over there and she's our consultant. So I have no doubt that we can get some support from them in finding out details about things like that. And I will put that as an action item for me to follow up on.
Yeah, and that would be great to know. Again, I'm not trying to throw up like, you know, reasons not to do it. I just, you know, want to make sure that we're going for things that will really contribute and not sort of cost us more time and, and, and effort than we, than we get out of it. One, one other question is sort of a thought to throw out there. So I mean, we're trying to get our heads around as the county and I think the city too on the use of American Rescue Plan funds. And, you know, we're still learning about what the strings are that are attached there. But it's like some of, some of what's, you know, and that needs to be one-time funds, not, you know, annual budget, but it does seem like some of those sort of infrastructure connection items could maybe be, you know, drawn from those ARP funds. So just to say, that's something that I think will, you know, will, we'll keep learning from our end what they could be used for, but over the next year or two, you know, those could contribute, you know. Again, taking your point fully that we're already kind of behind on trying to fix some of this stuff. You know, again, at least to fix that year or two, or, you know, help contribute to getting some of these ideas up and running in the next year or two, we will look into, or that's one commissioner. It has come up for discussion that we could learn more about whether we can use those funds to try to solve some of these problems of making some available lots more developable and get them, you know, sort of in the works.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would be really helpful. I've heard from a couple of builders maybe they might be entrusted. And it, it could help, maybe it could help trans- translate some vacant lots into something. But ha, you know, having any tool like that to, to motivate development is always going to be a beneficial, a benefit. I'm sorry. All the words.
So, no, that's good. And, and so I think the sort of comments, you know, so, you know, sort of request is like, as, as, as you, you know, as you work in affordable housing circles, if you hear of other people thinking of clever ways to use ARP funds that, you know, meet the criteria guidelines from the feds and eventually from the state pass-through funds, that'd be great just to know, you know, what, what other people are, are thinking is.
Yeah, the word on the street is everyone's frustrated because there's not clear guidance right now. But as soon as I hear something different, I will make sure that you guys know as soon as possible.
Yeah, I think, I think the initial guidance came out on Monday and I haven't had a chance to go back and look at the recording of that, so.
Thanks, Jeff. Do commissioners have any more questions?
Kristy, my, my only other question would be in, in some of those recommended uses for the funds, would, like, when you're talking about hiring deed restriction admin staff, would that be like an employee at the county? Would that be an employee at the city, at the housing authority, build a generation? Maybe like the Economic Development Corporation? Where would, would that employee be? And if, if that was something, I mean, is that something potentially that we would be able to start sooner than, like, say a ballot initiative being passed or something like that in collaboration with the city and the housing authority or just, just trying to feel out what that looks like so that we can appropriately plan, I guess?
Yeah, it's great to always be talking about timeline. So the answer is we don't know yet. That will be a decision that we will be facilitating you, the city and the housing authority discussing probably in the fall. You know, we had our first deed restriction meeting and we have our next one next week on the 19th. We're going to be slowly working through making decisions. And in the last meeting, we're going to be helping you guys decide where that administration should sit. I can tell you that traditionally it is usually in a housing authority or in a department of housing. I can also tell you that there have been some problems having it in a department of housing because of sunshine laws. So the deed restriction document legally needs to say that no personal identifying information will be released, right? That's standard. Any, any financial document says that. And so if that document, all of those qualifying documents and tax returns and all of that stuff lives in a government entity such as a department of housing and a community member makes a request for those documents, then a staff person has to by hand retract out all personal information. So for what that's worth, that's why some communities have said, man, we wish we would have went with the housing authority rather than a department of housing. But it will be your decision to make as a group. The housing authority has not committed to administering deed restriction yet. I think they're still learning about what that would take. And as far as timeline, we are hoping to work with you guys every month to make those decisions that still need to be made on the deed restrictions so that in 2022, we can be ready to start implementing. Getting it, and I feel like that's an optimistic timeline. There's a lot to accomplish by the end of the year. And you guys will have to let me know if I'm pushing you too hard to get the, to get those things done. But I, yeah, I would say that we need to finish the deed restriction document and the community guidelines before we are ready to hire someone who would then build out a program, start marketing it to the community. And then your planning commissions could start using it as a tool through the PUD negotiation process. I said a lot. Any questions on any of that?
I, I don't have a question, Kristy, and I, I'm not sure I've figured out the best way to articulate this, but I hope folks from my actions have understood that I am not, I've never been one to believe that the city has its problems or its responsibilities and the county has its, and there's no, you know, that there's, they're, they're separate. That I don't believe that's the case. However, I'm trying to figure out a way to say that I think that this actually is something that the city has a little more leverage to perhaps take more of a lead on with county support rather than the county necessarily pushing or funding any kind of initiative primarily.
Sorry.
I don't think that was very eloquent, but.
Specifically about deed restriction or housing in general?
Just housing in general, with, with implementing strategies of the URA, with having a lot of, you know, infrastructure within city limits, with having the housing authority. I think there's a lot that council can have conversations on and figure out, you know, how much the city is going to support and push that as well. And then I think we all are really happy to be partners in that. But I, I don't necessarily think it's, you know, what, what does the county want to do? I think there's a lot of decisions and responsibility for the city to consider.
Yeah, I would agree that it certainly should be both the city and the county making these decisions. And I may have misinterpreted this, but the majority of the developable land, developable land is in the county. Most of our city land, because it's such a small space, is already developed. And so of course, we have the infrastructure problem, but if we could get infrastructure to developable land in the county, I think that, you know, hopefully surrounding the city is best so we don't have urban spread and people are closer to the grocery store and transportation and the school, hospital, all that stuff is more beneficial. So I do see that it is an opportunity for the county to support their community members.
Yep. I, I don't disagree, but I also think that everything you've like specifically listed here on deed restrictions or, you know, infill, like those are a lot of, I think that fall, that there's a lot more opportunity to jump on, you know, things sooner than later in the city with that kind of thing. And, and, and perhaps, you know, just annexing those peripheral properties or opportunities into the city. And if those, those kinds of programs live with that entity and that makes sense to sorry, direct, I guess, to one, you know, the housing authority. I just, I just think that kind of having that mentality of that, focusing that consolidation of effort and programs in an entity or two might, where, where then like we can follow suit perhaps could be, could be beneficial.
And so opportunities for you to collaborate would be to become a multi-jurisdictional housing authority with the existing Leadville Housing Authority? I'm just trying to make sure I'm, I'm seeing your vision correctly.
I guess I just, I, and I don't, I don't necessarily think that council or city planning commission doesn't understand this or, but I think that there's a lot of decisions and, and triggers that they can and should pull and conversations to have you happen within the periphery of the city. I, I don't, I don't, I think, I think implementing and to maybe one of Kayla's points earlier of, okay, what's this funding for? I mean, I think we have to implement and, and identify some small projects and start looking at the programming and, and show success there before perhaps talking about a multi-jurisdictional housing authority. I don't, although I don't know what the, you know, but any disservice would be to, to have a multi-jurisdictional housing authority. I just think, well, I, I'm sorry.
No, don't be sorry. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the way, the way that you are envisioning this rolling out so that we can best help you get there. Any other questions from council? Looks like Greg might have something to say.
Well, to Sarah's point, I think right now the, the city's at the cutting edge of this. And only because of, of the, the possible availability of land. All the land that we're looking at right the second to try and build either low-income or affordable workforce housing is in the city limits. That will change, you know, you know, as was pointed out, ultimately we'll tie up all the city land and then it will have to go into the county. So I do have a question for Kristy. If, if we wanted to make the housing authority, the city-county housing authority, does that have to go to a vote of the people?
I'm not sure. And I wonder if Augustina knows.
It doesn't have to go to a vote.
Thank you, Augustina.
How would that be accomplished, Augustina?
Um, Greg, I actually have a workbook that was put together. Steps that you need to get to me. Need to send that to you or I can, um.
Augustina, you're breaking up a little bit, but I think you were saying.
Augustina, I would love to see that, just to, just to have some idea of how that gets accomplished, if that indeed is the way we want to go.
And then would commissioners like to see that as well? Or would, um, you like it to start with Greg?
I think if you could send it to us, that'd be really helpful, um, so that we can see that and, and prepare and plan for what to support, um. You know, because it sounds like the majority of these potential funding mechanisms and programs that they do fund will require some kind of initiative to be, uh, placed on the ballot. And so I think we kind of need to be able to plan for, you know, hey, we want to initiate this deed restriction program and it's going to live here and it's going to be run by this entity. And here's how we're going to fund it through collaborative process with the city and the county or, or whatever that looks like. So I think that would be helpful for us to, to understand how to do that legwork and if that's the expectation for us to do, um, kind of that legwork. And then when we meet again about this to say, here's what we've, what we've found out or what that expectation is. Cause I think it's really hard to to, um, market an initiative like this with how important it is. Um, you know, everybody understands the importance of it and we can feel, um, the importance of it. And I'm sure that all of us have, you know, a friend or a family member that's been affected by this, um. And, but it, it's hard to totally commit to one funding mechanism or one process when we don't have um, the structure of it developed yet. And so I think it would be a lot better for us to say, hey, we want to develop this deed restriction program and it's going to live in the housing authority and the housing authority is going to become a joint housing authority with the city and the county. And the county and city are going to split a full-time person to administer the housing authority stuff um, and the deed restriction program. And as a result, we both support this ballot initiative for X Y Z funding mechanism.
So just so you know, the reason we decided it was important to get in front of you in May is because we know budget season is really busy. Um, and so we didn't want to be coming to you like too late. Um, like, right, you would need to make a decision in July if, if you wanted to pursue short-term rental excise tax. Um, and so we're trying to be very strategic about the time and I do understand that it probably feels a little bit off-putting. Um, and also, we can't do anything at all. If there's no money. Um, and so the, the first step, the first thing that we need both the county and the city to do is say, yep, this is a priority and we're going to put X amount of money for it. And then we, we can work through like how that's going to look. And, and I, I'm not by any means saying like the city will create it all or the county must create it all, or the housing authority or the housing coalition will tell you how to do it. Uh, no, I, I, I want to work with all of you guys to help you get there to accomplish your goals. Cause the way I envision the housing coalition, and I hope at some point you guys can envision that is we are a capacity building tool so that you guys can accomplish the heavy lifts to address housing, um, when you don't have the time to, you know, this presentation alone has two hundred hours of work into it, right? You, when would you have the time to do that when you have so many other things on your plate? And so I hope that you can say like, we're interested in this, this and this. Please do the research on it and bring up back the research, um, so that we can make an educated decision. Did that address your concern, Kayla?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna just, um, I just want to know what the expectation is from, from you guys so that it doesn't feel like we undermine your process or your progress. Right? So if we say, okay, great, we've gotten these tools from the housing coalition. Um, and we know that these are our options. If we do work to develop that, um, you know, collaboration with, with the city and the county housing authority, is that going to undermine your progress?
Or I think, I think we'd be asking, we'd be asking you to tell us, yes, we want, we want that to be the next step so that we can facilitate that for you.
Okay, that makes much more sense to me. Thank you so much for, I just wanted to get that clarification and understanding because I definitely don't want us to jump the gun in, in running away with, you know, we've gotten this information and now we just take it and run with it type of thing. And undermine the process and the efforts that the housing coalition has put into, um, the work that you guys have done, but I want to make sure that we're not um, giving the housing coalition or, or our constituency, um, you know, the idea that this isn't something that's important to us because it is. I think we all are very much on board with, you know, like, we're ready to make an investment. We just want to make sure we make the right investment and understand what we're investing in.
Sure. Um, so, uh, yeah, we don't want to duplicate efforts at all. It looks like Sarah might have a question.
I was just gonna, um, say, I think, I might have misinterpreted something said, but I, I think that it would be better to have some of those conversations about where these things live and make some preliminary plans before promoting any kind of funding, you know, ballot initiative. Um, I, I, I feel like those decisions could be relatively easy, at least to have as goals. Um, and I think that would be easier to explain what a comprehensive, um, structure might look like to the community.
That's really great feedback. So we're presenting to the city on May twenty-fifth. And then if we could get something in June for you guys to get together, um, in a work session to discuss this further. Do you feel like that we could accomplish it in one meeting? Or should we, um, shoot for two meetings, like one in June and one in the beginning of July so that we would have time to get that, um, ballot initiative straightened out later in July?
Well, I wonder, I mean, I think that's also a conversation with the housing authority and figuring out, you know, what level. Cause in a conversation that I had with a board member, they could potentially take on ten deed restrictions managing. And I don't know how accurate that is. Um, as far as the housing authority's board or staff, uh, reality. But again, I think, I think without things, setting some short-term goals that touch on or are guided by some of those opportunities and that list of options of how we can start cracking away at the issue. I, I don't think we need to have, you know, necessarily, um, the bank, you know, the, the fund fully funded to, to start trying to trip away at some of those things and start an education with the community. And, and so I don't, I don't know what that answer is as far as how many. I mean, I, I could tell you right now, what I personally think, you know, the most appropriate home for that kind of stuff is, would probably be the housing authority, but I think that's the conversations with the housing authority to figure out. Um, you know, how we, how we can start that and get there.
Great. Um, so I am hearing that a joint work session with um, the Board of County Commissioners, City Council and Housing Authority sometime in June, separate from the deed restriction conversation, or maybe in lieu of the deed restriction conversation for a strategic plan would be helpful in June, maybe two of them. We'll start with one, see how far we get. To try to make those short-term goals of where's the deed restriction administration going to live? What other things in these recommended uses you feel like you should prioritize first so that you are more prepared to allocate funding mechanisms for twenty twenty-two budget? Is that correct? Is anyone opposed to that, um, that strategy? Okay, hearing none. That is the direction we will take. Um, I would, I know that you guys have another agenda item. I would like to hear from anybody else um, on the line. If, is that okay in a work session? Can I ask for other people? Okay. Anybody else on, um, on the meeting have anything, any feedback they'd like to share? Okay, um, the next, the next steps that I would need is if you would like me to help or to work with Chris Floyd to get an answer on if the short-term rental excise tax is possible in the county. I don't know if you have to approve that in, like, can you unofficially approve that? Or does that need to be a vote in a regular meeting? I'm not sure how the process works.
This is Chris. I'll just chime in and say that I, I just need direction from the commissioners as to what they would like to do on that question. And so that will be up to them. It doesn't have to be a voted on thing. I, the, as county attorney, I work for the commissioners, so the services I provide are at their direction.
I've beat like every bush I know to beat to try to get an answer. Uh, I would not ask you to, to use that resource if I had any other chance of getting an answer, um, on it, honestly.
I'd be, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to speaking with Chris and utilizing Chris, but I, I'm, I'm also not sure. You know, I, I get, I'm also not sure that it would be that terrible, or maybe I just like need to hear more of why, why it would, what the, what the harm would be if, if only municipalities could exercise that for the city to exercise that on their short-term rentals. And has the city done that? You know, that, that might be the first place to start.
Yeah. So our recommendation is that we not pit, um, uh, community members against each other. Um, city short-term rentals having to pay a tax that county short-term rentals um, would not probably sit well with the community. Um, whereas we do feel like that this is probably the easiest supported funding mechanism, um, for the community. Like, I don't think that in, hardly anyone is going to oppose this. Um, based on the community feedback that we have got so far. There, there was a concern, you know, it was a recommendation in the action plan and then, um, it was a concern that um, was raised about if we could implement it in the county. Um, and so yeah, I think the first step is we just need to find that out.
Is there a differentiation between, uh, a use tax and an excise task tax? Would a use tax be easier for us to do if an excise tax isn't applicable?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can get an answer for you.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing up that idea, Kayla.
Um, I, I'll just chime in and just offer quickly too, that I, I did some quick research on this and so far I've not been able to find any examples of counties implementing excise taxes in relation to short-term rentals. And I understand Anne Schneider, uh, chimed in too, that she had done similar research and came to the same conclusion. So, you know, I, I think it's smart for, as Commissioner Marcel brought up, to maybe be thinking of other options. Uh, if it ends up that the determination is that's not a viable, um, mechanism for Lake County to implement.
Yeah, it's interesting. So Summit County has an excise tax to, on short-term rentals to support mass transit. Um, and I have a call in with them to try to find out how they did that. Um, and it is a county, um, initiative, not a municipality initiative. So that's kind of what makes me think that it's possible. It's just not used often. Type of thing. And I think.
Thanks for that. I'll reach out to Summit County's attorney to see if I can get some more information on how they, they put that together.
Great. Um, and it looks like a resort tax. I'm not sure what that is, Sarah. But I could look into it.
I'm not really sure what that is either, but that's, I've just heard it from the beginning of these conversations, you know, over the years. I don't know. I, it says also called a facility fee, destination fee, amenity fee, an urban fee or a resort charge um, on guests. So I, I'm not sure. Um, the distinction either.
I'll put it down as something to research and, and bring back to you next time we talk. Okay, um, so then the last thing that I would like to hear um, from each of the commissioners, and yes, I'm putting you on the spot again. I'm sorry about that, but I, I would just like to hear. For allocation of building materials, sales tax collection. If with more research and more planning, if that was something that you feel like you could support. Um, activation of mill tack, mill, the mill levy, if that is something you um, would be interested in hearing more about and could potentially support, um, and the same with the short-term rental. Um, so who would like to go first?
Kristy, I'm really sorry. I don't think I heard your whole question. Can you repeat it?
Sorry, my internet. You know, Leadville internet, so reliable. Um, I'd like to hear from each of the commissioners on all three of the, um, funding mechanisms. The allocation of the sales tax collected on building materials, activation of the mill levy and, um, short-term rental excise tax. If with more information and a solid plan, if those things are things that you would be interested in learning more about.
I, quick, quick reaction from me, I think, I think that the building material fees is counterproductive to creating incentives for development. I think that the short-term rental excise tax could have potential. And what's the other? Oh, the mill. I think that we need a cool, much clearer plan developed between city housing authority and county, um, to perhaps, uh, allocate the, a full recommendation, but, um, I, I would be open to a, um, you know, a small, um, percentage to, and creating a housing fund that we don't, might not yet know, you know, how specifically those dollars might be, uh, spent. Um, but I think we do need, we kind of need a at least a vague, clear plan of the, the menu of where, um, such dollars might be spent.
Thanks for your feedback, Sarah. One clarification. At this point, we're not, um, considering a building materials use tax. Rather, we were asking you to earmark the sales tax that is currently being collected on building materials, which is that three hundred thousand dollar number that we provided you with. And if you would like us to look at the data from twenty-two to get a more accurate number, we're happy to do that. You just need to tell us, um, that you want us to do that.
Gotcha, gotcha. What's the request to the city look like as far as sales tax?
It would be similar. Um, we have not, um, broke that data down between county and city yet, but we and we think we probably can. Um, and so in a, in a following meeting, if you would like us to dive into those numbers more and say, this would be the county chunk, this would be the city chunk. Um, and we would bring that in a spreadsheet so we could manipulate it with you in real time to say, okay, but what if we did this and what if we did that? But yeah, we, we would just need your direction on, yes, we're interested in how you would like, like that data to look.
Thanks for that clarification. I would definitely be interested to, to learn more and chat through that more.
Great.
Kristy, my, my two senses mirroring what Sarah said, and I don't think that there would be opposition to utilizing any of our mail credits. If we had a plan developed for that, I would just want to be sure that, you know, our projects like the Justice Center and that type of thing wouldn't have to swallow that up, you know? So I would really hate to make that dedication to the Housing Coalition and then get down the line and say, well, actually, we're gonna need that back. So, I mean, you know, or, or figure out how to reduce that, or, or something of that magnitude. I would, I just would really hate to get that far into that conversation and then have to reel that back and start over. But thank you for also making it clear that it's not an additional use tax on building material. That's helpful to know that that was the data that you had, had gotten from our sales tax. I just would be curious about the administrative burden that that would put on our finance department to calculate that wayfare tax each month from the NCIS codes and then divert that. So what kind of administrative burden that would put on us? And then if it would be worth it to do a separate ballot initiative specifically to a use tax on building materials itself. While I understand Sarah's concern about, you know, the incentives for development and that kind of being counterproductive to development, I think that we can look at those counties that have done that and, and see where it has been successful or where it has not been successful. But, and I do really like the, the short-term rental use fee, or use tax, or excise tax, or whatever option we can come up with there. Because it does give a way to spread that burden to people that come in and use our services and put, have impact on our, our services, and we can use that and turn it into something really great. So that's, that's my thinking there.
Great. Kayla, I do really appreciate your thoughtfulness about, you know, the Justice Center and, and how much mills that, that is going to need. So thank you so much for thinking about that already. I had another thought, and I lost it. Why don't you go ahead, Jeff? And if I, I think of the other thing I wanted to reply to Kayla, I will do that.
Yeah, well, maybe just following on from that point, I appreciate Commissioner Marcela just saying really clearly, I mean, that there are only so many unused mills we have, and that Justice Center, you know, without, I think it's a, you know, I mean, without putting any information out there that isn't ready to be public, you can imagine that a large building costs tens of millions of dollars and will, you can, you can just assure it, it is in the same order of magnitude as the total housing budget you're presenting here, you know, per year to cover the cost of that, you know? Not exact, but you know, we're in that exact same ballpark, and there are only so many mills to go around. So, I mean, that's a brutally hard discussion, but you know, as much as we're behind the eight ball on affordable housing, we are also behind the eight ball on a jail that's been shut down essentially for two years. You know, so just, yeah, I mean, I think Kayla said it really well, like, can't really commit to some, you know, it, it, well, yeah. The, these are basically in direct competition for a, 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 a single pot of money. That's, that's really hard. I mean, I do think, you know, something that's not on, you know, it's not on your to-do list as the Housing Coalition, but you know, we, I think, you know, the, the longer term answer is like, we really need to expand our county and city tax base. And, you know, we fall short on the commercial tax base, which, you know, generates a higher, you know, tax rate than residential. You know, so that, I mean, you know, that's on us, you know, in the long run. It's not something we can bank on, but it is something that we need to think through a strategy for with the EDC and many, many other partners. But, you know, trying to squeeze more things out of a fixed budget is gonna, you know, at some point, it's just that there is not going to be there. So, you know, to me, part, you know, and also like going back to your pie chart, you know, there's that daunting, you know, second half to two-thirds of it. That just, you know, the mills are not there to support that. So we need to figure out a way to increase the tax base to, you know, as quickly as possible to, to fill that hole. So I guess that's, you know, that doesn't really like answer your question about like wanting to finish down on a commitment, but you know, the, I mean, to your question on the mill levy, you know, that makes me incredibly nervous to, you know, activate or use, you know, that unused portion. Cause there is only so much there. And I think, yeah, I'm in sort of the same place that I, I, I made the comment before, I mean, the I, I'm very open to the short-term rental excise tax. It just doesn't seem like it fills a huge part of the bucket. If it's something we can activate faster, I mean, that also, you know, my concern there that I expressed before is what are we going to eat up? Or, you know, i- is it, is it going to take so much time and effort to get that in place and then implement it that, that I, I just want to make sure that that is worth pursuing in terms of the sort of administrative time and hassle to get over the finish line and then implement it, that there aren't more productive things to pursue. And then, yeah, I think I'm, I'm, I'm open to using some of the existing, you know, sales tax. What, one other thought started getting a little bit scattered here, but on the, on the wayfare tax, you know, side of things, I, I think it was Kayla who asked a question about, you know, how much administrative time or, you know, how quickly it would take to sort of calculate that. I don't, I mean, my sense is we don't actually need to like literally calculate it. I mean, it's, it's nice to call it that, but it's really just, you know, earmarking some use of funds. So if the answer is it is hard to calculate that, then we shouldn't do that. And we should just, you know, roughly approximate it based on the data we have and just earmark that going forward.
If you did my job for me, that was the thing I wanted to reply to Kayla about, is that we would be, we would be recommending a certain amount, like, we would say, you should allocate this set based on our projections. And we could do a projection every year for you if that would be helpful. We recommend that you allocate the set amount, so as not to be a burden on Crystal, because we know that she has a lot going on.
And I assume from your perspective, it would be better if it was a fixed amount, not a, not a proportion, not a portion.
I think either could, could be discussed farther in future meetings. Might just be easier if it was a set amount, both for setting budget and
Yeah.
and for Crystal. But we can talk about that more in the future. Sorry to interrupt you, but you helped me. Thanks.
That's good. I think, um, that was all I had. I, I don't know if I completely answered all your questions, but, you know, that's where I am in terms of thinking through the, the proposals and information we've talked about here.
Great, thank you so much. The only other thing that I wanted to say to Kayla that I also remembered is we would like to talk to you about building materials use tax in the future. We just, like Dan said, just got some information like days ago that made us not prepared to have that conversation today. And, and so look for that in the future. And I think that we have everything that we need to continue this work. Is there anything, any last thoughts that anybody has, whether that be presenters, community members, commissioners, before we wrap up for today? Okay, hearing none. Thank you guys so much for your time. We know that this is not easy. We, we do not come to you lightly saying that, well, this is easy for you. Just give that money. We, we know that it's serious and also kind of just going back to Jeff's, we need to expand our tax base. There's zero possibility of creating more commercial enterprises since we don't have enough community members to live in houses to staff. Like, we're not going to be able to attract new businesses because our existing businesses cannot staff already. And so it's, I'm not, I'm not by any means saying one is more important than the other. It is all intimately related. Our health, our economic success, our housing, our childcare, we're all talking about the same thing. We're all talking about thriving in Lake County and in Ludville. So, yeah, that's all I've got for today. Thank you so much for your time. Never hesitate to reach out to me by text, phone call, email. If you have like a last minute thought, hey, I forgot to mention this, or, I don't know about you guys, but sometimes it takes me a little while to process, and a couple days later, something comes up, ooh, maybe we, maybe you should look into that. So if you have anything that you would like us to bring capacity on, don't hesitate to send it our way. And then look for some communication with me. Actually, who, it'd be great if I could work with one commissioner to schedule, to find, to find a date that would work. Do you guys have each other's calendars?
Kristy, if you reach out to me, I can generally help schedule with the three of us and pop something on our calendar.
Perfect. So I will plan on working with Kayla on, on getting that joint planning meeting scheduled in June. Thank you guys so much. I hope you have a great day.
Thank you, Kristy.
Okay. All right. Sorry. Moving on to fire station, or sorry, fire and rescue. Sorry, I, I need somebody else to outline what our, our specific conversation is. Is it just the tender and the equipment request?
All right, Sarah, specifically what we want to discuss is the Type III engine, which we know takes 12 to 14 months from the time we order to the time we take delivery on it. Our fear is that if we wait until the, the, you know, this fall for, for the 2022 budget conversations, that now we're talking about this late, like December of 2022, before we'd even get that piece of equipment. So what we want to talk to the county commissioners about, and then, you know, the city council as well, is can we make that commitment now so that we have it for next fire season? And I don't know the answer to that. I mean, that's, that's something we would like to discuss with you today and see if making that commitment now makes sense in order to have it available for the 2022 fire season. And Dan's right here, so yeah, there's the Type III fire engine. Dan, would you give us an idea of cost? And then how you project it could be funded?
So Type III engine, the last, the last spec that we received word back on was with Eagle River. And that's what the, the Model 34 spec that you see right there on, on the screen, Eagle River just purchased that fully equipped for $415,000. So they range anywhere from 400 to 450,000. The, the purpose of this vehicle is not only just for wildland urban interface, a Type III, Type VI, Type IV. Those are specifically two wildland capabilities, but this one here, we can outfit this piece of equipment to have somewhat dual purpose. Because as you all know, Engine II, which the 2002 subfin has had problems for many years, we're kind of just band-aiding that, that piece of equipment for its lifespan. And then we purchased a piece of equipment, another Type I engine from Summit County for a dollar. So you can only imagine what kind of life we're going to get out of that piece of equipment. So the purpose of this would be for that dual purpose, bond capability. This piece of equipment get into a lot of areas, mostly in the south, but also in the north, north areas where, and, and passes need to get on, you know, just very difficult areas to get into in, in Lake County. This one can get into those places unlike our, our Type I piece of equipment. This one also goes out more so on a wildland fire than, than a Type VI. It gets more than a Type VI engine. So we'd expect for during the summer seasons that this piece of equipment would be, would have four personnel on it that would go out on wildland deployment. Probably, most definitely an engine boss, an engineer, and then two firefighters. Probably as two firefighters. Be able to get this piece of equipment. So this Type III engine, we've talked about for many, many years. This is just the spec for it. We're, we're currently going through the spec and kind of just making it our own. This is currently Eagle Rivers, but we'll, we'll add or subtract things that we don't need in the spec based on our, our conditions here in Ludville in the Lake County. The, you know, most of the time on a piece of equipment, you know, we get a bigger engine because of altitude, a higher, higher pump capacity, because once it gets out, it's, it's rated at a lower capacity. We wouldn't do that with this piece of equipment because this piece of equipment would always have support by other pieces of equipment, actual tender, the Type I engine. This would be primary response, but it would always have equipment hopefully on its wheels in order to be able to support it. But we wouldn't go high spec on this one like we did with our Type I. On those upgrades that I was talking about. So again, we've been talking about Type III engine and I, I really truly agree with this piece of equipment, what Lake County, not only just for in-district response, we want obviously to get on those fires before it becomes disastrous here in Lake County, but also for that, for that deployment given by the law. So that's pretty much all I have, Mary. Unless, unless you have any questions that I can answer for you based on effect. Oh, when I do the budget.
Well, we can do, we can do the budget. Let's see if the county commissioners have any questions about the equipment itself and, and the need for it, because we're talking about obligating to the 2022 budget fairly early in the year if we make this decision. Any questions from, from the commissioners?
Yeah, I, I have a question. Can, can you just help me understand where this would fall in line of service? This would take the place of Engine I? And Engine I would become second due, is that correct?
Oh, no. No, Engine I is our Type I engine for community response all the time. The 2002 subfin is our, is our second new piece of equipment. And then the E1 that we got from Summit County is the, the third due response vehicle as an engine, as a Type I. That's the primary engine. The type, the, our, our second due, the 2002 subfin is suffered. So the, the goal for this one to be have that dual capability while it's not on wildland deployment would to, would be to have it as second due capabilities, give relief to this stuff. The Type III, I mean, the, the Engine III, which E1, that's, I mean, that's not even in service right now. And we're gonna, and we're gonna try to be creative about how we utilize that piece of equipment. So this would be a standalone response capability. It won't replace anything other than giving relief to the 2002 subfin until we have enough funding in order to be able to replace the 2016 Pierce, which is our current first duty. So then the 2016 Pierce right now would go to second. We had enough funding to be able to purchase another type one engine. Type three engine, hopefully it would be the, the moneymaker that will, for well, in response to soften that blow when we have to purchase another type one. That's your question?
Yeah. I don't doubt that this is a wise investment because of the amount of forestry that we have in our community. I just worry that we are getting lost in the idea of making money, money rather than protection locally. And so it, when you, when you present it like that, it's really difficult to invest $400,000 into a brand new piece of equipment, knowing that we're going to have to invest in another engine like engine one soon to provide protection here.
Yeah, understandable. So let's set the money for you. Let's set the money, money conversation aside. Although that's a good, it's a good investment for the business, right? In the business being the wildland aspect of bringing that revenue in, just like it has been in the past, and our wildland program is growing. Now, today, we've, we've been able to soften, you know, the taxpayers' expenses, hundreds of thousands of dollars towards these very expensive pieces of equipment, I this kind of stuff. But let's say, the community response capabilities on what this piece of equipment gives us, is that quicker response to wildland fires, but also the protection in the wildland or structural protection? And being able to actually access some of our subdivision areas where the type one engine can't go get in to protect people's homes. Not only that, this piece of equipment can also, for the dual purposes, be set up to have rescue capabilities or over the edge rescues and, and that kind of fashion as well. One of the, one of the greatest things about this piece of equipment, because it's, it is smaller than a type one engine, is that we can train our greener crews, if you will, like our, our residents, et cetera. We can get them driver operator utility. And also, well, it's called just, you know, now, but, and then, and then work on their pumper certification, but they can start operating this piece of equipment a lot faster than they can with our type one engine based on our standard operating procedures, our emergency driving procedures that we have. And then have this placed down in that multi-use facility down south for the response capabilities. They can take that piece of equipment and cover those secondary calls that were established, you know, that we're having 60% more of. Or back up the, the primary engine on structured fires, wildland fires, anything like that. And or so that we don't have to wait on mutual aid as much as, as much as we currently do.
If it's
Go ahead.
If it's here, right? Because if you're planning on sending it out on wildland, it's not going to do much good here as additional response if it's not here.
Correct. If it's, if it's in district, yes. And again, it would only be gone during the summers. But that's, that's either the, that's either the type three, the tactical tender, or the type six, right? So one of those pieces of equipment, anyways, just like how it is now.
Okay. So then we still wouldn't have adequate wildland fire protection because that'd be gone.
It depends. Because what I do is I look at the conditions that we're in. We're in a good wildland fire season. And what I mean by that is, you know, our moisture content's good, our, our probability of having a wildland fire here in the county is more minimal than it, than it normally would be. Then, and only then, that's when pieces of equipment will go out on wildland deployment. Unless it's a type six engine and it's just one engine boss going out with resident reserves or somebody in training on the career, career side to be able to get taskbooks signed off in order of, you know, our wildland program can experience to greater. But again, when, when we have a wildland season here, if we're going to have a wildland fire season here, then these pieces of equipment will be here in district for our coverage and protection first and foremost. Because we forget about the money thing, right? We don't care about that at that point. We care about our, we care about our community first.
Yeah. But we have to care about the money thing a little bit because it is a lot of money.
Well, and keep in mind, you know, we have a, no, I understand what Dan's saying. I would, I would say this, we have obligated the firefight balance. I mean, in other words, we have obligated ourselves to the need to make money through the wildland program every year. For instance, we have $44,600 obligated against that fund currently for the Southern Fire Station. We also have $27,000 sitting in there with which we pay the tactical tender. So, I mean, if for some reason we don't make any money in a wild, wildfire season, then that money is not available to us. So yeah, it, it's, it's a double edged sword. There's no doubt. I would say to your point, the type three engine, if it goes out, doesn't change the way we act and react right now. We still have the tactical tender. Actually, we, we would add that piece of equipment as an example because normally tactical tender would bottom wildland deployment because it's, it's a, it's a piece of equipment that's in demand. If the type three went out instead, the tactical tender would stay here. And so that would give us additional firefighting equipment in the summer that we, we currently don't have when that tactical tender is out. And it was out a lot last summer, so. Yeah, the type six. So let's talk about the finances of it, if we, if we can. Currently, unobligated in the firefight balance, we have, and it's a rough number. Donna tries to keep it tracked, but we have about $100,000 that's unobligated in there. What we had talked about, you know, internally with the fire management board is, let's say, $83,000, which would be a 20% down payment on that piece of equipment. We wouldn't have to pay for that piece of equipment additionally until 2022. And, and our, if we get a five-year lease on that piece of equipment, we'd be talking about $70,000 a year against the, the fire, the overall operational budget.
What other, what other programs or ways can we use that fund balance? For implementing
70% of the fund balance is supposed to be for capital investment, which, which would fit this, this nicely. Additionally, that firefight balance, and it's, it's defined, can you be used for trading? And I think that's 20% of the firefight balance. That 10%? What's the other 20%? Okay. So it's investment in equipment, PPE, things like that. So that, that's, that's how the firefight balances is is used currently.
So I'm sorry, Dan, I, you didn't come through on my end for your answer to the mayor. I apologize. But is there, have we ever used that for leveraging and implementing programs in active wildfire mitigation?
They have not used it yet. How we 20% of the firefight balance to support wildland. The support is supposed to support the wildland program. Whatever the wildland program is, like if we're going to go from fire mitigation. It could support those efforts.
Okay.
Just like the, the $3,000 we're going to allocate towards the CWPP, that's going to come out of the 20% of the firefight balance because it has to do with wildland fire. That's how we're going to allocate that based on the budget, for an example.
Yeah. What about like a chipper? That you've been asking and that we've been talking about?
A chipper would be a good investment, except for the continuous maintenance of it.
But the capital investment that comes with 70%.
It could, yeah. The way it had to be one, but that one for me. So if, for instance, if I help public works work with whoever's working out the landfill for a larger chipper of some kind, and you know, there's maintenance issues with that as well, plates, all of that kind of stuff, just as an example here. Then I, we could support that effort if there is any kind of matching kind of fun for that chipper. Utilizing either the 20% or the, or the 70%. But right now, like the mayor, you know, said, fun, you know, it's, it's allocated to a lot right now. You have three more payments on the tactical tender.
Those are yearly payments of about $27,000 per year.
And we're supporting staffing out there for $4,000. And we have 42,620. We made about $203,000, I think, last year.
So let me say this. I mean, obviously, time is of the essence. However, to, in order to make a decision, we could make a decision in principle that we would like to pursue this. But we haven't actually sent out an RFP for bids on this piece of equipment. So we can't actually say definitively what, what it will cost. If it's $415,000, which is what Eagle River just paid, you know, at least that gives us a, a benchmark, if you will, for what we're talking about. I don't know that it's, it's a final cost. When, when do you think you will have costs in hand?
I've been here, calling, I know, working on this, we've got mechanical changes, that. Or process. So.
A few months.
A few months.
Well, then we might, we might be wasting our time if we're starting about a couple more months before you could even give us pricing. Now you're talking about July, and then if we were to order it in July, based on a decision, we still would get it until the following.
Chief, I appreciate you. I appreciate the department more than I can say. I, I think this is always a hard ask in a conversation, and I can only speak for myself. And again, probably not, not very, not articulated very well, but I just, I guess, I just, I feel like it's like one piece of equipment or this or that, like big capital expenditures. And I would get a lot more excited about programs or implementation of, of mitigation in our county, if that was also just even mixed with these kinds of requests.
Well, and I completely understand that question. So we're, we're really behind the ball of mitigation. And as you know, from the conversations we've been having about those mitigation efforts, we're in the big steps of any kind of implementation with any of that. By the time we start our mitigation efforts up to where they need to be, one, that's going to cost millions. And, and, and two, the process of that is going to be we need something in the meantime or affect our community prior to when those mitigation efforts actually happen. If we don't have the protection of our community prior to, then we are, we just say, we say, okay, well, we don't have a piece of equipment behind the staffing or the deal. And then we're saying no to the actual cross capabilities we have in order to stop something detrimental. And also, we're saying that we're not going to get around to mitigation efforts. And that's going to have a cost, Chief, well. Point of having the response capabilities is to take care of life properly. The mitigation effort will take care of that. And also first responders' lives beginning into some of the subdivisions, ground fire for, right? mitigation effort will take that, hopefully, and our, in our community first. But we have to have some kind of initial start. And we're already behind, we're already behind the curve ball with, with trying to catch up with that hadn't been done for so many years, right? Placement equipment. And I'm sure you experienced it in not just the fire department, of course, right? I mean, in all of, of the other you know, public works and, and, you know, sheriff's department, police department, street department, all, everybody needs pieces of equipment. This would be next in line for, I think, a smart investment for one of the agencies to receive a piece of equipment for community protection. In order to be able to give relief, like I said, for community response, because engine two is not going to last us very long. Engine three bought for a dollar. Engine one is a 2016 and has good response capabilities, but that thing's always in the shop. Pierce didn't do a very good job during manufacturing that piece of equipment. We're struggling for the response capabilities on, on pieces of equipment. And this one right here, this is that we're asking for before we have to have for a $700,000 piece of equipment at one, waiting on the fight. And also, it's the one that brings in the money in order to be able to have better conversation when it's, having hundreds of thousands of dollars talked about when we cut money away. No, I know it's, I'm talking about the money thing, we get a commission ourselves, but I think it's important to invest in a business that brings you in money or to be able to give some relief to the taxpayers. Colorado River, they have such a program that they brought in $1.4 million in wildland response. Now, they have ways that they did that, and we're building our program up. But say we invest now in the actual business itself, right, which is the wildland program. Can you imagine me five years from now saying we have such a great wildland program that, oh, we're going to bring $1.4 million to do? I think that's pretty significant. I think that's worth it. But, but, okay, it's, it's worth the thinking with our staff. There are other ways out there, but ways to do it.
I would say this. We have really paid attention to all of our departments, I mean, city and county. In the city, we've done a good job for our police department in terms of, of cars. And for our street department, we've done a good job in every, every year trying to bring on new equipment. We've kind of let the fire department languish. Our newest piece of equipment is five years old. And, you know, I, I think we could probably put off decisions for a year or two, but at some point, we can't allow the fire department to be the third class citizen in our community in terms of investment. And, and right the second, and I, I'm to blame for that too, you know, because we haven't really stepped up and made sure that we have the ability to replace equipment that is aging.
What was, Kayla has her hand up. Sorry. Go ahead, Kayla.
No, that's okay. I just, I just have a quick question because my concern is local protection. And so I keep feeling like I'm getting mixed messages, like that we're getting the, the type three with the intent to keep it here to offer protection, but then I'm also hearing that we're get, because, okay, so we're getting the type three to keep it here to offer okay, so we're getting the type three to keep it here to offer protection because our second due engine, you know, is moving out because it's, it's at the end of its life. But we're also planning on sending the type three out in the summertime to make money and build our wildland program because these other agencies have had the opportunity to bring in over millions of dollars from their wildland program. And so I just am a little confused of what the actual intent is with this piece of equipment and what the status is of the equipment that the fire department owns to be able to offer adequate protection here year-round, outside of wildland fire, you know, response in other areas, because that's a big concern for me, is, is that I'm hearing both of those things being talked about in tandem, that the type three will eventually replace the second due engine, but that the type three is also going to be a moneymaker and and so, and that your equipment is all very much in a state where you know, it's getting to the end of life, and so I guess, if we're looking at this in an overall big picture type of look, what's the overall status of all of the equipment that you have?
Okay, so your confusion is correct. You're saying, you're saying what I'm saying, but you're just saying it differently. Um, and, and it's, and you're spot on. The, the piece of equipment, when it can go out on wildland deployment in order to make money for the city and the county in order to pay for other capital improvements, that is one of the goals. To build on our wildland program and get firefighters the experience that they need while they're on wildland deployment to bring back to our community while they're in district. Or greater response capabilities and their knowledge and experience, wonderful thing. That's one side of what we want to utilize the piece of equipment for. The other side is the operational response that you're, you're more interested in for our community and, and while during the winter time, you know, that piece of equipment's here. So it was a type six, so it was all of our pieces of equipment. The, during the summertime, it depends on what we can put on availability and what our staffing levels would be on what type of piece of equipment to send out. It could be the tactical tender that goes. It could be the type six or the type three. The type three is more desirable for wildland urban interface, and as we know, a lot of people live wildland. So it would be more desirable to go out on wildland deployment. So we do want to do that. We want to take advantage of that. Because again, it brings that experience back, it brings in that revenue, et cetera, but while it's here in district, it gives us that greater response capabilities while it's here. And there are some summers where we go out all summer long, there's some summers where we're out twice. Um, and there's some summers we don't go at all. In the last sixty years, I think it's only been two years. But yes, um, you, you're absolutely right, Commissioner Marcel, you're, you're on. We're saying the same thing. It, it's the overall investment for the community to give relief to a piece of equipment that is great and have greater response capabilities for our resident reserves, to be able to bring that piece of equipment to see in support of engine one response capabilities or to take care of the second calls that we're having sixty point four three percent or when, when the engine one's tied up on a call, and we've had, we've had calls where there's, we have four orders going on at the same time. Uh, that's, that's, that's crazy for a person engine company. The thought would be is that this, this piece of equipment gives automatic aid to the primary engine during larger incidents, or they take care of those highway calls from three hundred south or medical calls three hundred south, all of that kind of thing. Or when the engine here in district, the primary engine is on a medical call or a highway call or a structured, well, not a structured fire, but anything outside of a structured fire or wildland fire, then they take their best second call on the equipment. Not doing that, we're not doing that on a piece of equipment that really truly needs needs that relief, which two thousand. And, and truly, okay, so the tactical tender, to answer your question, the tactical tender was purchased in twenty seventeen. We've paid for that entire piece of equipment. That's the three thousand gallon water tender. We've paid for that entire piece of equipment up to this point out of the fire fund balance. That is a machine. That is a boat six by it has wonderful wildland fire capabilities, the kind of hose streams and muzzles and the port that's on it. We have a twenty twelve uh, type six engine um, that was paid for by, by the fire fund balance. That fire fund balance, to include the equipment, that was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That was off the grants and stuff. The two last, last two pieces of equipment that we purchased for wildland purposes um, have not been paid for by the technicals. My vehicle, my command vehicle, man two, both of those pieces of equipment of sixty thousand dollars each um, were out of the fire fund balance. That was no cost to the taxpayer. The hundred and twenty-five thousand towards engine one, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars towards the truck replacement because the old truck had, uh, got hit by a vehicle. Brand matches all that kind of stuff. So are, are trucks old? Yes, it's going to need to be replaced at some point. That, that truck, the ladder truck itself takes care of our downtown core for the most part. Uh, it did take care of the rescue. They had to do a, you know, a high angle rescue off the bucket or the stick part of the other day when that fell down the pole, which we had lunch with him the other day, him and his wife. Wonderful. It was great. They had a little baby and they have another baby, uh, they're expecting another, so it was, it was great. So our, our pieces of equipment are, are getting old. I mean, our, our command vehicle, our command vehicles are going to hang in there for a little while, I think. Our, we sold two thousand four Ford. That thing had nothing but problems. It's that old inline, uh, was it nine, nine oh, I think it was, the engine, uh, I think for best. We sold that two thousand four type six engine a while back, uh, in order to be able to put a down payment on the tactical tender. We sold the nineteen ninety-two old tender, it was the white one, called the white whale. Sold that one also to be able to put that money towards, um, oh yeah, I can't remember. Of course, maybe it was tactical tender. I think that's where that funding came from. So we have, we have sold off some of our old equipment. We have purchased some new ones, but again, the major ones that we're going to have for replace are going to be a significant amount of money. And I think that's probably why we're, you know, third world country sometimes and, and looked over because look at one piece of equipment, which is an engine six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars versus you doing the entire police force where each vehicle's eighty, ninety thousand piece, whatever.
Right.
It's over upgraded. It's different.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Kayla has a, Kayla has a question.
Thanks, chief. I, I do appreciate the, the synopsis. I think, you know, we have to, I, I totally understand where you're coming from with how important it is to invest in proper equipment in order for people to do their jobs and for first responders to really respond to any given situation, and so I think for me, part of that question would be, you know, if you, if you were hit with the worst-case scenario, if you were hit with the worst-case scenario and engine one was in the shop, engine two was down, tactical tender was out on wildland, how would you respond? To a structured fire?
Oh yeah, see, okay, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you that. I'll give it to you real life. So engine one was in the shop, engine two was in the shop. The tactical tender was in the shop. And we were running off of a type six engine and, and the truck. That is, that is pretty much worst-case scenario, and we were, we were like that for about four hours for our community, which was had me on my edge of my seat because that's roughly four hundred and fifty gallons to do equipment that don't have the kind of capabilities to go to any kind of structured fire. All in the while, the sheriff at the time took us out of the fire ban, not even communicating with, but that's another story. So we were sitting very, very thin pertaining to response capabilities. And, and, and to answer that, th- this kind of piece of equipment, having a new piece of equipment of five hundred gallons right off the bat, a four hundred and fifty G M comp with dual, dual response capabilities, if it's in district, would give us that relief. If engine one, for whatever reasons, is in the shop, engine two, okay, it's suffering, but it's our first due engine of type one, we still have, we have the flexibility now to be able to have a, I guess, a greater response capability for our.
So it's, it's after three o'clock, but I don't know that we're going to make a decision today, don't know that we're asking for that. I would say this, Commissioner Marcelo's concerns, what if, if we make this, this investment decision, whenever we might make that, because we don't have pricing right now, whenever we make that decision, what if we said in, in until such time as we have another piece of, of equipment that fulfills either a similar need or at least some need in the community as a newer piece of equipment that we would, we would not send the type three engine out of district under wildland? Now, that's, that's not the ideal in terms of building that fund to help us buy that equipment, but you know, last year with the, with the type, with the tactical tender of type six, you know, we made a couple hundred thousand dollars, so that, you know, that was, was, it was, it was a terrible wildfire year around Colorado, and we still did pretty well. And we didn't have a type three, so the tender and, and and type six were out. If we bought the type three and did not send it out of district, it gives us a capability in the summertime that we currently don't have when we send people out on wildfire deployment. And these two things, I mean, it, it's hard to, to say, you know, one's, you know, uh, that you can't do one because there's some risk to that, because there always is. Uh, but, but what would you think of that as a possibility in terms of making an investment in a new piece of equipment?
I, I don't, I don't think that, well, speaking for myself, I'm not opposed to investing in equipment. I just want to invest in, in a piece of equipment that is going to be reliable, right? Because I think that there's been concerns for engine one, there's concerns about engine two. And I don't want to talk about investing in a piece of equipment solely on the idea that we can take it out and make money on it. I think that we should invest in a piece of equipment that is going to be reliable for us. And if we have the opportunity to, to make that revenue from providing a resource to other communities when they're hit hard in the wildfire season, like, that's great. But I think, um, I think for me, it's like if, if Dan were to take his department and say, here's what I need to operate fully, functionally, and here's how I plan to replace all of this equipment to be able to do all of these things. I know that that wish list is going to be huge and it's going to be expensive. But, but what does it look like? Because that might be the place where we start to plan. So I don't, I mean, I just, I understand, you know, the need for the investment, and I understand the reasoning behind the desire to invest in a type three. I just want to make sure that the investment isn't going to be solely on making money to buy other equipment when we should invest in that other equipment first and then invest in a type three to send out to build the wild fund fire balance or fund balance or whatever, you know what I mean?
That's a good point. Maybe we should be talking about another type one, since one's five years old and our second due is, is ancient. Uh, I would say this, the beauty of the type three is that, that it, it has a response capability in parts of the county where the type one struggles. Panarc would be a classic example, but there are a lot of places up highway eighty-two that are a problem, up highway ninety-one in terms of what a type three might be able to bring to our community versus a type one, so if we were to say that, that we, we need to make a development, just start from scratch, we need to make some investment, something rather than nothing. Uh, and if a type three is, is a good investment in our community and then the next step would be, would be to buy the next, let's say, five years to buy another type one engine, you know, to me, at least, that's a plan that, that I feel like I could support. And then we could agree that, that as long as we only have one first due type one that's, that's worth a damn and a type three that really does add to our capability in the county, maybe that's a good, good start.
Oh, sorry, Kayla, do you want to go ahead?
No, no, go ahead, Jeff. I, that's all I had to add. I think that that was very well said, mayor, so go ahead, Jeff.
Well, yeah, I was going to agree on that, and I think that's sort of where I hear this conversation struggling a bit is, you know, it may absolutely well be that this type of equipment is sort of, has that multi-use functionality and works in a, you know, smaller semi-rural area like ours, I think. As I start hearing about where different pieces of equipment is, like, I guess what I'd like to have is sort of like, okay, like in an ideal world, we need like, you know, these five pieces of equipment or seven pieces or three, you know, you know, and, you know, here's what we currently have in each of those slots, you know, this one dollar piece of junk, you know, this relatively new thing, but ah, it's starting to like, oh, art, like, I'd like to guess, I, so I guess I'd like to see sort of like, what's not like, you know, amazing, like, ideal, but like, you know, what sort of, what we think is what we would sleep well at night with, you know, in our two fire stations. And I guess for me, I'd like to know, like, given where our current pieces of equipment are, you know, I mean, do we need to sort of always have budgeted fifty K a year, three hundred K a year, you know, like, you know, what, just for sort of like the sort of five to ten-year kind of budget planning in my head, like, you know, what do we need to be reserving, whether it's leasing, you know, whatever, whatever we decide is the next thing to invest in. You know, I, I guess I'd like some ballpark of what we need to be reserving in our budget to, to feel like we're on track to like not, not leaving, you know, when I'm gone in eight years, you know, like, how am I leaving things better? You know, and not sort of deteriorating over time. Does that, does that sort of make sense? I, I think that was like similar to what?
It not only makes sense, it's what we should have been doing for the last ten years.
Yeah.
But we didn't. It's about what happened to react to a purchase rather than having planned for it, uh, you know, years a- ahead of time. Please.
I can't hear Dan. I can't hear the chief.
How about now, is that buffer?
Yeah.
So the, um, what we have, I, I brought forth a apparatus replacement for in twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and you know, you look at that pieces of equipment, it showed replacement dates for all the pieces of equipment, what they were, what we'd have to save annually for that, and you know, of course, it was looked at and tossed. You know, you, you're, you're talking about a, a significant amount, I think it was like two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars a year, if I remember right. For replacement of pieces of equipment when they actually need to be replaced. And so, you know, not having set that kind of money aside because of all the other things that, that cost money, of course, and all the other crisis and the, and the proper planning and everything for all agencies. and all the other crisis and the, and the proper planning and everything for all agencies. We have to be somewhat reactionary, which I hate to be. But overall, this piece of equipment is the next one in line. Like what the mayor was saying, it's the next one in line in order to be able to purchase this in the next four years, et cetera. And who knows, the fire fund balance after the tactical tenders paid off, might be able to assist to pay that off a little sooner. And then the next one most definitely is a type one engine. This, I think, is going to give us the relief that we need in order to be able to properly plan for a $700,000 piece of equipment. Because that's what a type one engine is going to cost.
Well, and, and Danny, I want to say like, I, I truly apologize for like asking for, you know, an assessment that you've had in hand for years.
Oh yeah, no, no, no apologies necessary, Jeff.
I can only imagine you're going to leave this meeting and be like.
It's okay. I understand that he's coming on board and.
Yeah, I think, yeah, so, I mean, and, and, and yeah, like a lot of things where, you know, we're playing catch-up. And, you know, I can see how this less expensive piece of equipment that can fill more needs quicker, you know, is the best way. I mean, I, I can see how that's the best way to play catch-up. I think I would just like to, you know, when you can take a breath and like find that piece of paper that you I'd love to see that to know, like, okay, over the next five years, like, holy cow, we actually are going to need, you know, to find $2 million, you know, not every, you know, like. So I mean, and, and that was good. And even to know that, you know, if we had started, you know, several years ago, that it's in that like 250 a year, you know, ballpark. And that's just what it costs to get decent equipment.
We are full of the equipment that the fire department needs. And we've talked about a type six, which is a brush truck. And we have the tactical tender. And then we have a type one. We have a couple backups for it that are kind of iffy. We have a ladder truck. You know, we have, we have the base equipment right now. This, this is a kind of a piece of equipment that, that adds to, to internal capability. And if we need to, to agree as a group that, 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 that piece of equipment will stay in county, then, then maybe that's, that's the appropriate tack here. But I don't want to belabor this too long. I know you've got, you guys have had a long meeting already. Just mull it over, maybe discuss it among yourselves. We will come back to you with some pricing and see what, if anything, we can put together.
That sounds good, Mayor. Are you bringing this to the, to, to council tonight?
No, not tonight. I have been talking to council about it informally. We've discussed this, but we haven't actually made a formal request. The main reason we're coming to the county commissioners first is we know this IGA is a 70/30 split. And we want to have some understanding that in, in terms of the future of our fire department and our community, you know, what are we willing to do? And the, the main reason I'm bringing it to you right now is because of how long it takes to get this piece of equipment in place. So it becomes less important if, if we're not going to send this thing out on wildland deployment. And I really wanted to make this decision in order to have it ready to deploy next summer, then it becomes maybe less time-sensitive in terms of, of our consideration. Does that make sense?
I think so. Yep. Sounds like we, we need just some numbers and then the projection and, and what you already have, Chief.
Numbers without going out for RFP, and RFP means that I'm asking companies just to give me, you know, their bids.
Well, what's wrong with that? We do it all the time. I do it with other departments. I, I have to know what something's going to cost. If they don't have, if they can't nail it down for us, just tell them the equipment list and say, what is this going to cost? Don't even do an RFP. Just get them to give you cost. Tell them we can't make decisions without knowing what it is we're talking.
Can you do a, like a request for information?
An RFI? I haven't heard of that one, but okay.
They, they do it in Clear Creek County.
Yeah, I would, I would think that's a very reasonable approach. I would think these companies frankly have to do it all the time.
I imagine there's only a handful anyway that manufacture this kind of equipment.
That, that's a good point.
Right?
I think there are dealers that deal with different.
Oh.
Are there? Different companies that actually make a type three engine? Huh, okay.
Outside of the forum of like, apparently it's popular. Okay.
All right. Let's, let's wrap it up. I, we don't want to, we don't want to spend any more time on this when we have to. But thank you very much for, for the conversation.
Thank, thank you, Chief. Thanks, Mayor.
See you guys later.
Bye.
Anything else for me? Jeff, I got to go run and get kids.
Yeah, I know, same here. I should not start. Maybe, maybe just like super quickly, I, I was going to do it by text, but I think I, I, I am collecting the coroner car, letters of interest that we're getting. And, but it's been, I think I need to prioritize the county manager getting that process going since I think we were closing the applications this week. So get to that first.
Sounds good. Very good. All right.
And we have, do you have, how many physical letters do you have?
What, on the coroner?
Yeah.
I, I don't know, but I, I just sort of been shoving them in a folder, so I didn't lose them in my, in my inbox. But I, I, I mean, I want to say like seven.
Yeah.
But it's possible that I've gotten, you know, like a letter of interest and then an actual letter from, from folks. So, but, you know, like more than two.
Yeah, I think I have four that have come through on my end, but just preliminary.
Very good. I can also pick them up and organize that as well and push that info with the association. So, let me know.
Cool.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll see how, what tomorrow brings. So if, yeah, if I'm just like not getting to it because there's too much stuff on the county manager, NHR manager side, I'll, I'll take you up on that.
Okay. Excellent. Did he, did you speak with that gentleman that called? Alexander?
No, I just know that I have a, I have a electronic. Or I, I think Tara scanned it in for me.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Kayla, you said he called you. Did you talk to him?
No, I just have a voicemail from him.
Okay. All right. I'll just, I'll just return his phone and let him know that we're collecting interest letters. All right. All right. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Bye.